Good morning. This is the Board of County Commissioners Board meeting. It's November 1st. Welcome to another month. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner. Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Sacks. Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard, would you please do the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance? Everybody, please rise.
Dear God, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business for our community. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness. Impart your wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. Okay, time to take a look at our agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions, Madam Administrator?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, we have one addition, and it's an add-on regarding creating the Palm Beach County Advisory Committee on Behavioral Health, substance abuse and co-occurring.
And that's item?
That will be item 5D1 on page 42.
On page 42. Very good. Commissioner McKinley, I believe you'd like to make a reorder?
Yes, Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to reorder the agenda and move item 4A1, I'm sorry, 4I under special presentations to the first proclamation.
Okay, without objection. We're gonna, I'm gonna move the agenda to be approved. All in favor, all opposed? Show that it's being approved. Let's see how many of us are up here. There are five of us here. Okay, so it's five to nothing. Do I have a motion a second? Okay, I'm looking for, yeah, Commissioner McKinley, seconded by the Vice Mayor. My clerk is now happy. Okay, five to zero. Very good. All right, so now it's time to go into the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing up here. Commissioner Bernard, do we have any cards for the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Sir.
Very good. Okay, I'm looking for a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Show that it's approved, five to zero. As you can see, we move very quickly in this meetings. All right, time for special presentations, and Commissioner McKinley, we will put item I up first, and then I will follow with my proclamation on Alzheimer's awareness.
Thank you for that adjustment, Mayor. I appreciate that. I have a very distinguished guest in the audience from my district who's been a good friend and a wonderful partner in the community, so at this time I'd like to invite Mr. Mark Belissimo up to the podium. I was planning on doing this at my last meeting, but that actually is next week, so, or two weeks from today. Today, we are declaring November 1st, 2022, as Mark Belissimo Appreciation Day. Whereas in 2006, Mark Belissimo formed Wellington Equestrian Partners, acquired the equestrian showgrounds, and then implemented a vision to expand the winter equestrian festival, growing it into one of the world's top equestrian events and establishing Wellington as the winter equestrian capital of the world. Whereas he proposed a forward-thinking plan to make Wellington the year-round equestrian capital of the world and cement this position for decades to come against other regions that seek to challenge it. Whereas Mr. Belissimo has shown an unyielding commitment to his community by founding, along with his daughter Paige, who is also with us today, the Great Charity Challenge. Since 2009, it has distributed $17.7 million to nearly 300 Palm Beach County profit nonprofits. Whereas he recently launched an anti-bullying campaign and raised approximately $300,000 for the effort in just one hour. Whereas last year, Mark Belissimo sold the Palm Beach International Equestrian Center to Global Equestrian Group. With increased exposure in Europe, Asia, and South America, Mr. Belissimo and his management team have rebranded the property as Wellington International. And whereas the Village of Wellington and Palm Beach County have greatly benefited economically and culturally from these endeavors, the Economic and Tourism Report states the 2022 Winter Equestrian Festival generated more than $152 million in total horse-related spending and nearly $432 million in visitor expenditures. The report also shows that 195,671 paid room nights were created as seasonal rentals and hotel stays. This is the largest of overnight accommodations created in the event's history. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this first day of November, that November 1st in our county is hereby proclaimed Mark Belissimo Appreciation Day. And Mark, it's been wonderful to work by your side, not only here, but up in Tallahassee, to try to secure appropriations for all the efforts that you do. But if you've ever been to the Great Charity Challenge, there's, his, his team often has to pull him away because he'll say, oh, let's just pull out another $25,000 for another charity. And they, they like, well, sometime you gotta stop, but you would keep going if you could. And what you've done is you've really opened up the equestrian world to everybody, much like Tiger Woods did for golf. And you've made it a real family event, and you've given back so much to this community, and it's just, it's been an honor, and I look forward to seeing what you do in the affordable housing space as well. Let me give you a few moments to speak.
Well, thank you. No, I greatly appreciate it mostly. This has been, Palm Beach County has been just a spectacular supporter of everything we've done out in Wellington, and it's been so great to see the jobs we've been able to create, the philanthropy, philanthropic efforts that have had an impact on Palm Beach County. So, it's, Wellington's my hometown, and I really do appreciate all the support that everyone in the community has given us through the years. So, thank you so much for that. Great honor.
Okay, while they're getting their pictures over there, I'm gonna ask Pam Pelani, Steph Martyr, and Jennifer Braceid to come on up. So, I've retired my pink from last month, not that you should forget about breast cancer awareness, but we're moving on now to Alzheimer's awareness this month. I have my purple hat, and I'm ready to go get my purple items out of the, out of the closet. So, today, we're gonna be declaring November 2022 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder, tragically robbing individuals of their memories and leading to progressive mental and physical impairment. And whereas, in the United States, more than 6.2 million people are living with Alzheimer's disease, including an estimated 400,000 under the age of 65, who have younger onset Alzheimer's disease. And whereas, approximately 580,000 individuals in the state of Florida have Alzheimer's disease, of which an estimated 55,000 are in Palm Beach County. And whereas, 65 seconds, every 65 seconds, someone in the U.S. develops Alzheimer's disease, the sixth-leading cause of death in America. And whereas, the top 10 causes of death in America, Alzheimer's is the only one that can't be prevented. And whereas, in 2022, the United States has approximately 11 million caregivers, providing an estimated 15.3 billion hours of unpaid care valued at more than $257 billion, and in Florida, over half a million caregivers provided more than 1 billion hours of unpaid care valued at an estimated $16 billion. And whereas, Alzheimer's disease is the most expensive disease in the United States. In 2021, an estimated $355 billion was spent for the care of those patients. And whereas, Palm Beach County recognized the efforts of local Alzheimer's nonprofits, such as Alzheimer's Association, Brain Bowl Events, Lewis and Ann Green Memory and Wellness Center, that raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and related disorders, thereby improving the quality of life for those living with this terrible disease and for their caregivers. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners that this is the month Alzheimer's Awareness Month. It will be November 2022. And again, before I have Pam speak, I really want you to know that this is something that affects more and more of our families. As we are aging, we're seeing more and more people who are affected by this terrible disease, and we are certainly very appreciative of all the efforts to raise the awareness for this and also to raise funds for this. Pam, would you like to say something?
I want to thank the county commissioners, especially Mayor Robert Weinroth, for this incredible dedication and significance of your recognition of what we do. As an attorney and volunteer for Alzheimer's Association, I know yesterday was Halloween, but I am excited to always be their caped crusader. And I feel that I've earned the right to say many times over, thank you, thank you, thank you, because what you do in the county commissioner's office truly helps shine a light onto what we are trying to express through the dark tunnel of Alzheimer's Parkinson's and Lewy Body dementia, as well as the 100 other types of dementia that people in our county face each and every day. I want to turn it over to Jen Braceid, who is the head of the Director of Government Affairs through Alzheimer's Association, and just encourage everyone who's wearing purple, including members of our community, to come out. We have several events in November for Alzheimer's dementia awareness and funding. We encourage you to come to all of them. Thank you again so much.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weiss, Commissioners, thank you so much for this recognition. My name's Jennifer Braceid. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for the Alzheimer's Association. As mentioned, there are over 52,000 individuals in Palm Beach County who are living with Alzheimer's disease. That's just almost 15% of our population, and our numbers in Florida are expected to rise by over 725,000 in just the next two years. And I know our 65 and overpopulation in Palm Beach County is looking to increase by over 22,000 residents in just the next few years. So, this is something that is very serious for us, the amount of caregivers, so we appreciate the recognition and all the support that you do for those who are living with the disease, and we are very grateful. And I'll pass it over to my colleague Stephanie Martyr, who's our Book of Walk Director.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Weinroth, for putting this proclamation together for us. As Jennifer said, we have over 52,000 Palm Beach County residents who are living with Alzheimer's. So, on behalf of them and their caregivers, thank you so much for doing this and recognizing this month as Alzheimer's Awareness Month. We hope that you'll all join us at our Walk Ten Alzheimer's coming up on Sunday, November 13th, at South County Regional Park in West Boca.
Good morning. While they're taking their pictures, I'd like to ask Christina Bergstrom of the Homeless Coalition, James Green, Wendy Tippett, Adopt a Family, Gulfstream Goodwill, Lord's Place, the Homeless and Housing Alliance, and Palm Beach County Food Bank, if you have representatives here, please join me at the lectern.
Morning. All right. So, we're here today, we're going to be declaring November 12th through 20th as National Hunger and Homelessness Week in Palm Beach County. Whereas, the state of Florida ranks 15th in the nation for the highest homeless population, and 1 in 7 of the state's population struggles with hunger. And whereas, the recent Palm Beach County Homeless Point in Time Count conducted in 2022 identified 1,404 individuals and families experiencing homelessness, and the Palm Beach County Hunger Relief Plan indicates that more than 300,000 residents struggle with hunger. And whereas, the purpose of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry, homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Palm Beach County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas, Palm Beach County Homeless Advisory Board has developed Leading the Way Home, a robust 10-year plan designed as the next phase of ending homelessness in Palm Beach County. And whereas, the intent of Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Homeless Advisory Board, the Homeless Coalition, the Homeless and Housing Alliance, the Palm Beach County Food Bank, the Lord's Place, Gulfstream Goodwill Industries, Adopt a Family, and other service providers in Palm Beach County, now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this first day of November 2022, that November 12th through 20th in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. So, thank you very much. And do we have somebody who's gonna be speaking? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss, Mayor Weinroth, and Commissioners. I'm Christian Bergstrom, President of the Board of Directors of the Homeless Coalition of Palm Beach County. I'm here today with some of our wonderful service providers from Adopt a Family, Gulfstream Goodwill, and the Lord's Place. But this proclamation also belongs to many other organizations in our county that work daily to eradicate homelessness and hunger within Palm Beach County. As we are all aware of rising rents and extreme lack of affordable housing, the number of those needing assistance continues to rise daily. Proclaiming November as Homelessness and Hunger Awareness Month is one small step in creating more awareness for our causes and the need to fund affordable housing and make sure that families do not go hungry. Our sincerest thanks to the Commission.
Okay, while they're doing their pictures over there, I'd like to ask Tim Snow to come on up, along with Al Travasas, Eileen Travasas, Kyle Stewart, Bonnie Snow, and Lisa Rossi. Okay, well, I am very, very pleased to be offering this proclamation today. That's gonna be declaring November 1st as the 40th anniversary of the George Snow Scholarship Fund. This is a fund that was established out of a tragedy, and part of this proclamation's gonna explain that. But we are very fortunate to have Tim and his legion of volunteers here, because what the George Snow Scholarship has done over the last 40 years for the students of Palm Beach County is really very important. So, let me read this proclamation. Whereas November is National Scholarship Month, a time to recognize the importance of individuals, organizations, and businesses for their dedication and support of scholarship programs. And whereas, the George Snow Scholarship Fund was founded by the Snow family and community members in 1982 as a tribute to George Snow, a Boca Raton resident teacher and real estate developer who was tragically lost. And whereas, since its establishment, the George Snow Scholarship Fund has been dedicated to improving the lives of young people and achieving their future aspirations by providing scholarships for secondary education opportunities. And whereas, the George Snow Scholarship Fund, a respected nonprofit organization in South Florida, has awarded over $18 million in educational grants to more than 2,500 local residents here in Palm Beach County. And whereas, to ensure the success of scholarship recipients, the George Snow Scholarship Fund has also developed a support service network with emergency funds, laptop computers, college care packages, and the high school-to-college tools for success, for a successful transition program. So, now therefore, it's being proclaimed by the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners that the 40th anniversary of the George Snow Scholarship Fund is being memorialized here on the first day of November 2022. Thank you very much for your efforts. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor Weinroth. I want to thank you and thank all the Commissioners for this recognition. As we celebrate our 40th anniversary, we're actually, as of this morning, going into our 41st scholarship cycle. So, our applications are now available online, and so I ask that everybody that can hear my voice, if you know some young people in Palm Beach County, because we serve all of Palm Beach County who is deserving and has a financial need, that you'll point them to our website, which is scholarship.org, and encourage them to complete an application. We want to thank you again for this recognition, and we look forward to our next 40 years. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, before you take that photo, I would just like to point out that the foundation has been a recipient of the proceeds from the Great Charity Challenge, just to show how all the worlds are connected. So, thank you.
And I'd like to ask if Caroline Valencia, our Director of March of Dimes South Florida, can join me up here this morning. We are declaring November 2022 as Prematurity Awareness Month. And before I read the proclamation, I just want to make a comment. It, prematurity, preemie babies can affect lots of different families. It affected my own family. My sister was born premature. She was adopted by our family, but she was born to a teenage mother and ended up premature, and with the good help of the medical staff, she did fine. But it took an extra month to bring her home from the hospital, but we were all very excited when she finally got home. So, it's meaningful work that you all do. Here we go. Whereas, families face serious health risks, and March of Dimes fights for their health by supporting research and leading programs and providing education and advocacy. And whereas, March of Dimes has developed a collaborative model to study and prevent preterm birth through groundbreaking research at five prematurity research centers. And whereas, March of Dimes is committed to mobilizing the nation by amplifying the voices of pregnant people and families. And whereas, approximately 1,300 babies are born preterm each year in Palm Beach County, representing about 9.5% of all births in the county. And whereas, Palm Beach County received a grade of D+ on the 2021 March of Dimes report card. And whereas, March of Dimes looks forward to partnering with Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners in response to continued maternal and infant health crisis of prematurity. And whereas, the month of November is recognized as Prematurity Awareness Month, and November 17th is recognized as World Prematurity Day to raise awareness of the global crisis of prematurity. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, assembled in regular session on this first day of November, that November 22, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Prematurity Awareness Month.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss. I appreciate you lifting up your story and sharing how that has impacted you and your family. As mentioned, the proclamation, 1 in 10 babies is born preterm. It affects all families, especially women of color. We know they are 50% more likely to have a baby preterm, and often preterm babies spend time in the neonatal intensive care unit, the NICU, which is significant health issues, financial issues, and issues that can lead into childhood and adulthood. So, we are committed to funding research, education, and advocacy to make sure that as many babies as possible are born full-term. So, appreciate the opportunity to raise this issue and look forward to trying to prevent the preterm birth as much as possible.
While they're taking their pictures, I wonder if I could have Ashley, let me see, the Board of Directors of Florida Protective Parents Association, and Daria Furman, if she could come forward? There you are. And Ashley Sierra? She's not here? Okay, good, very good. Today, we are going to declare November 2022 as Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas, Families Against Court Travesties, also known as FACS, located in Palm Beach County, has been observing family and dependency court proceedings for almost 20 years, advocating for children negatively affected by court decisions. And whereas, the mission of FACS, Florida Protective Parents Association, One Moms Battle, and the Family Court Awareness Month Committee include increasing awareness of the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. And whereas, the mission of FCAMC is to increase awareness of the importance of education and training on domestic violence, childhood trauma, and post-separation abuse for all professionals, working within the family court system. And whereas, the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee also includes educating judges and other family court professionals on the empirical data and research that is currently available. Whereas, the mission is fueled by the desire for awareness and change in the family court system while honoring the children in the United States who have been murdered by a parent after a custody court rejected the other parent's plea for protection. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this first day of November 2022, that November 2022 is hereby proclaimed Family Court Awareness Month. Congratulations.
For the clerk's purpose, we jumped out of order. We should have been on 4E. We were on 4H, in case you got a little lost there.
Yes, for record-keeping purposes, we're just a little bit out of order. I'd like to bring up Jennifer Koritzky, please.
Commissioner, I wonder if we could just have a few words by?
Pardon me? Sorry, go right ahead.
Thank you so much for hearing Florida Protective Parents today and Families Court Against Travesties. As October winds down as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we want to usher in Family Court Awareness Month. Last year, I stood in multiple cities in Florida while we declared November as Family Court Awareness Month. In November of last year, Florida Protective Parents Association was formed to work towards a better, safer future for our kids. This year, Florida Protective Parents has sat on countless court hearings with Families Court, with Families Against Court Travesties and as guardian ad litem, and aided many survivors of domestic violence and families navigating through difficult custody battles in family courts throughout our state to make sure that children are safe and stay alive. What we have seen in family case hearings keep me up at night. Convicted child molesters were given children custody, unsupervised. Children screaming in terror and apologizing, soiling their clothes, while being ripped off at night from their beds to reunify with the abusive parents. Protective parents being stripped off their custody and put in jail for not forcing their scared children to go to the abusive parents as per court order. We have seen DCF not investigating allegations brought up by children. Unfortunately, we have seen it all. Our children are the most vulnerable members of our society and should be protected against all dangers, even if those dangers are their own parents. Unfortunately, in family court, rights for child safety and stable home comes after parental rights, and puts children in their direct line of fire to become exposed to adverse childhood experiences, trauma, and in worst case, murder, just like Grayson Kessler and other nearly 900 children killed in the U.S. in the recent years. I appreciate the county of West Palm Beach. Thank you so much, and the support of Florida Protective Parents and Family Court Against Travesties for hearing the community on this issue and bringing it up to everyone's attention. The child safety needs to be first. Thank you so much.
Jennifer Koritzky, thank you. And Jennifer is going to be receiving this proclamation, but I want to tell you a little bit about her. She's a DNP, an APRN, an FNP, an AAH-
She's a DNP, an APRN, an FNP, an AHIVS. I don't even know what those are, so she'll explain it. But she's also an Associate Dean for Graduate Nursing at Palm Beach Atlantic University. And we're here today to declare November 13th through 19th as National Nurse Practitioners Week. And with the advent of COVID, we all know how important the nursing field is, and we every day say thank you for what you do. So, whereas nurse practitioners play critical roles as trusted providers of healthcare for patients, and whereas nurse practitioners work to expand healthcare access in underserved communities and promote health equity and care, and whereas patients depend on the more than 270,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States and more than 18,000 in Florida to diagnose, manage, and treat their chronic and acute healthcare conditions, and whereas nurse practitioners provide high-quality, primary, acute, and specialty healthcare services while emphasizing health promotion, disease prevention, health education, and counseling while guiding patients to make smarter, healthy lifestyle choices every day. And whereas the confidence that patients have in nurse practitioners delivered healthcare as evidenced by the more than 1 billion visits made annually to nurse practitioners across the country. 1 billion! And whereas over 80% of full-time nurse practitioners are seeing Medicare patients and 78% are seeing Medicaid patients. And whereas more than five decades of research demonstrates the high quality of care provided by nurse practitioners. And whereas better utilization of nurse practitioners through modernized state laws and improved policies creates better health through a more accessible, efficient, cost-effective, and higher-quality healthcare system. And whereas Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners is proud to acknowledge the honor, proud to acknowledge and honor the service of nurse practitioners and recognize the contributions they make on behalf of the health and welfare of our residents, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this first day of November 2022, that November 13th through 19th, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Nurse Practitioners Week. And I'm sure you would like to say something.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Marino, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Jen Koritzky. I serve as President of the Nurse Practitioner Council of Palm Beach County here, and we are so grateful for this proclamation. As you know, proclamations help bring awareness, and I think, as Commissioner Marino alluded to, the last several years have pointed out just how important healthcare is. But I also have to bring attention and awareness to the fact that all the work that you do here on the county commission supports many of the social determinants of health, which greatly impact our patients, and we cannot do what we do on the healthcare team without you. So thank you so, so much. We really appreciate this, and we really appreciate all the work that you do.
Okay, moving right along. This is Nurses Week, I tell you. If I could have Nicole Bishop, Director of Victim Services, and Joy Radford Cole, Carol Messom Gordon, Eileen Boone, Kristin Ferguson, Patty Mika, Yuna Julivitz, and I did mess that up pretty badly, and Janine Hoben. I could have you all come on up. Look at all the coral, huh? We've got the memo today, ladies. And purple, wow, this is so cool. Okay, fasten your seatbelts. Here we go. We're going to declare November 6th to the 12th, 2022, as Forensic Nurses Week. Whereas Palm Beach County shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing. And whereas in Palm Beach County, the pain and trauma of sexual assault affect men, women, and children of all racial, social, religious, age, ethnic, and economic groups. And whereas the Butterfly House Forensic Exam Site at Wellington Regional Medical Center was established by the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners in 2011, and a sexual assault nurse examiner program was instituted at the same time. And whereas 1,466 forensic exams were performed in Palm Beach County by sexual assault nurse examiners between 2015 and 2021. And whereas Palm Beach County recognizes the importance of forensic nurses as being highly educated professionals who continue to meet the complex forensic and healthcare needs of individuals, families, and communities. And whereas greater awareness and promotion of forensic nurses ensures communities will utilize their services to prevent, mitigate, or intervene acts of violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, assembled in regular session first day of November 2022, that November 6th through the 12th, 2022, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Forensic Nurses Week. Congratulations, all of you. Congratulations, and thank you for your work.
Thank you so much. I can't see with my glasses on or off. I don't ever know whether to take, I'm at that age, or I don't know whether to leave them on or off. I can't see far up. But I'm Nicole Bishop. I'm the Director of Victim Services here in Palm Beach County, and I want to thank the Commission for all of your support over the years. Back in 2011, the Board established the Butterfly House Forensic Exam Site at Wellington Regional Medical Center and the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program. I would be remiss, as Commissioner McKinley is about to leave office, not to acknowledge her and Todd Monleren's work helping us establish this way, well before she was a county commission back in 2010, 2011, when we started getting the funding from the state of Florida, which is now a permanent item and is within the state's budget line. And so that is a huge win because we're able to have this program, and it is ongoing in Evergreen. Like it said in the proclamation, since then, over 1,600 exams have been formed, and this program has grown into one that is recognized both locally and nationally. Our forensic nurses are continuously expanding their knowledge by being trained and certified in various specialties and topics. Through a new OVW grant that we've received, we're about to expand our services to other victims of intimate partner violence, and we're really looking forward to that and being one of the first in the state of Florida to expand our forensic nursing capacities. We really think this is going to help the victims and the prosecutions in those cases. November 6th through the 12th is Forensic Nurses Week, and this special week has been dedicated to honoring the remarkable work of our nurses who practice this unique specialty. They're the ones who go out in the middle of the night, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to help people during their darkest times. And so this is truly a special practice, and only those with the biggest of hearts can do this type of work. Forensic nursing serves to ensure that patients who are affected by violence receive expert, compassionate, and comprehensive care. And we appreciate the work of our forensic nurses. I have with me Joy Radford Cole. She is our forensic nurse manager. She has one of the highest certifications in the country for forensic nurses, and we're super happy to have her here. And we really appreciate our nurses and all that they do, and the Commission and County Administration for all of your support. Thank you.
So our next proclamation. May I have Scott and Martha Harris and Jenna McNeil, please? And some folks from our ERM community. Good morning, how are you? Nice to see you again. This is a proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners declaring the second Saturday of December each year as Andrew Red Harris Artificial Reef Day. Whereas the Andrew Red Harris Foundation is a nonprofit corporation created in 2014 to honor the memory of a young diver, snorkeler, and fisherman who lost his life in a tragic snorkeling accident. And whereas ARHF is dedicated to assuring the long-term health and vibrancy of the coastal waters of Palm Beach County by building artificial reefs. And whereas Palm Beach County has a shared interest in building artificial reefs to provide marine habitat and recreation. And whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration has estimated that economic impact to Palm Beach County from snorkeling and diving the reefs to be $202 million annually. And whereas the ARHF has donated more than 19,000 tons of artificial reef material to Palm Beach County, equating to over $1 million in donations. And whereas the reef created by ARHF provide food, shelter, protection, and spawning areas for numerous fish species and other marine organisms while reducing user pressures on the natural reef system, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this first day of November, that the second Saturday of December each year in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Andrew Red Harris Artificial Reef Day. And it's been a wonderful partnership between you all and the county and ERM, so please say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. My name is Scott Harris. I'm the President of the Association, and I want to thank the county for their wonderful partnership. We're approaching our ninth year now. The county is the permit holder for the artificial reef sites, so they manage our projects, they guide us. Wonderful employees. The Director Drum and Caitlin Armstrong, Jenna McNeil guided us every step of the way, and we're fortunate to live in one of the most progressive and enabled counties for artificial reef building in Palm Beach County. That's really what makes this go and our partnership. We plan on continuing throughout the foreseeable future. We've already built almost two miles of artificial reefs that are thriving with all manner of marine life off of Juno and Jupiter, and we've got hundreds of acres more that can be built out off of Juno, and that's where we're going to go next. Thank you.
Can I take a picture?
Sure.
Would Julia DeTolo, Executive Director of Career Source, Judy Dunn, Director of Healthcare Business, Career Source, Bill Hall from American Medical Response, AMR, and all the emergency medical technicians and paramedics who are here, to please come forward?
It is a pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of Commissioner Dave Kerner. This certificate of recognition presented to Career Source Palm Beach County and American Medical Response, Inc. The partnership with Career Source Palm Beach County and American Medical Response, Inc. started in 2009 and provides job placement services for emergency medical technicians, EMT, and paramedics. With a post-pandemic need for first responders, a new Earn and Learn program was developed that includes student access to first responder studies at Barre University. Utilizing Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funding, youth from the county's school district choice academies are able to enroll in an apprentice-style program where they can earn an hourly wage throughout their training to become EMTs, paramedics, and firefighters. Students earn $12 an hour while in class, and graduates earn $16 to $18 an hour as they move on to paramedic and firefighter training. This partnership between a government and private organization provides a successful educational and career path for county students, presented on this first day of November 2022 by the Board of County Commissioners. Congratulations.
Thank you to the Commission. Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, on behalf of us. We are so proud to partner with AMR and the school district to provide educational opportunities, earn and learn, for our next generation of heroes. So, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Madam Administrator. Good to see you. Now, I think you know why we were so passionate a year ago when we were coming to you, telling you about the new program. It's Earn, Y-E-Learn, and we actually pay for these employees. So we vet them through the hiring process. Once they go through the hiring process, they have to go through our orientation, they have to go through Emergency Vehicle Operating Course, and then they're hired on, and they start, and we let them focus solely on their curriculum and studying and making certain that they're ready to go on day one when they hit the road. I'm extremely proud. Look at the group. Our targets are high school EMR program, students coming out, we help them turn into adults, those who are challenged with funding, and those in foster programs that grow up through the foster program, turn into adults, and need a little bit of guidance. That's, I'm extremely proud that we can help with that path and that avenue. I want to give thanks to Dave Bernhardt for bringing, I don't know where he went, for bringing back the partnership with Career Source. It has been outstanding. It's allowed us to infuse well over $1 million annually into this program, and this is what you get in return. So, thank you, Commissioners, for giving us a shot when we were going through our rounds last year, and this is part of the reward right here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, with so many people, is it possible?
I think we need to bring Wall up here.
Thank you.
Let's do it.
How you all doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing? Are you nice, Lawrence? How you doing? Thanks for being here. Appreciate it. How you doing? Good? How you doing?
Me is my husband Gregory Heisen. He's the Vice President of Nelson and Associates, Inc., and we are the managing agents for the Belgrade Housing Authority. On behalf of the Belgrade Housing Authority, Steve Weeks Chair, we would like to thank the Palm Beach County Board of Commissioners, the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, Ms. Baker, Dorrett Miller, Jonathan Butler, Sherri Howard, and Leslie George. And a special thank you to Commissioner McKinley, Commissioner who held our feet to the fire and held us accountable. Commissioner McKinley worked hard on the state and federal level to bring support for the rehab of Osceola and Okeechobee Center. We wish Commissioner McKinley well in her future endeavors, and we look forward to continuing to work with the county to improve these properties. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate them. Okay, Commissioner McKinley, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make some comments first, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this was back in 2019, so three years ago. And I don't know if I've ever said it at a meeting, but we were talking about some housing conditions. And Wendy Tippet is the one who tipped me off about what was going on. She said, oh, you should, I should tell you about the family we just referred to, Families First, out in Belgrade. And she explained it to me. And the next day, Greg Lingowski from Senator Rubio's office and I, we went out to meet with that mother and see the unit that she lived in. I'll tell you, eight years in office and five years of working for the county before that, there have only been two times where I've sent a text message to Senator Rubio. I usually work through his staff. One of them was on a Lake Okeechobee issue, just to say thank you. The other one was on this issue. And I said, Senator, I need your help. And I have never seen the federal government move so quickly on this one. And I really need to thank Ramona and her team for coming in and really turning that property around. And I think David Goodlett said it best last week that we ruffled a few feathers out in the Glades, but we ruffled the feathers for the right reasons. And when you have, and it still sends shivers up my spine every time I say it, when you have a one-year-old who's got a cockroach stuck in his ear and his little sisters that have bite marks on their arms from the rats that were biting them at night, and you walked into that complex and are into that particular unit, and you couldn't breathe well because of the black mold that was growing, and you opened up the cabinet underneath the kitchen sink and you could see straight out into the backyard. And when they came in and exterminated the apartment, the rats were like drunken sailors running down the hall and dying, and they had to be swept out the front door. You know, this family, this mother, her son was a valedictorian at Glade Central High School and was on a full scholarship at the University of Florida. And she was back with the little girls and the infant. And her husband worked in the farming industry. And these aren't all, they're not all field workers. They're just this housing complex and the Osceola Center is for anybody who works in the ag industry. So it could be somebody who's in the field. It could be the receptionist at the front desk at the packing house. And they work hard, and nobody deserves to live like that. And the number of people either commented on social media when I posted about it or said rude things, like, well, it's better than where they came from. And I said, well, that's unacceptable. We don't let anybody, we shouldn't let anybody in any part of the world live in conditions like that. And we're in the United States, and we're gonna do something about it. And I went up to Washington and had the opportunity to go to the White House for briefings. And Secretary Perdue was one of the speakers at that meeting. And so I made sure I sat in the very front seat, in the very front row. And so when they said, does anybody have any questions, I raised my hand and told him about this housing complex. And we had a lot of other meetings in Washington, but this is how you get stuff done. You know, everybody worked together. Nobody cared about political parties. We just cared about making sure no family ever had to live like that. No little baby ever had to go through that kind of a medical procedure. And so this, the significance, Mayor, of this $10.6 million grant that we are, that Ramona and her crew at the Housing Authority are a finalist for, there's only $17 million available in that pot for the entire nation. And this housing, the Okeechobee Center and the Osceola Center, are the two largest housing complexes for farmworkers in the United States. So it is a very significant project and proposal that would not be possible if the county didn't come through with some financing to help close that gap. So I want to thank you all for what I hope is your support. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I will move item 5B1A, B, and C for approval.
I have a motion by the Commissioner McKinley. It has been seconded by Commissioner Marino. I'm seeing no further discussion. All in favor, all opposed, show that it's been approved unanimously, six to zero. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on now to item 5C1. This is planning and zoning. If we need a presentation, if not, I'll look for a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Marino. Yes, certainly, Vice Mayor.
Yep, while they're coming up.
Come on up, don't be afraid.
Don't need a presentation.
We don't bite too hard.
But a question in regards to the master plan. Do we have a timeframe on when the report's going to be presented?
All right, let's have everybody identify themselves for the record, and then we'll have an answer to the Vice Mayor. Doug, you wanna take care of it?
For the record, Doug Wise, building official. Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, there is a deadline. It's September 29th, you know, the fiscal year for the state, 2023. So this is a quick turnaround. We have to get this done quickly.
Very good.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Okay, and just for the record, you, Patrick, we wanna just identify everybody at the table for the clerk.
Having deja vu here.
It is, yes. Well, we'll start with my neighbor to the right, Ken Todd. Ken has come back. He was our former Water Resource Manager, is working in the Building Division. Now Doug has brought him back and helping out a lot of issues and running point on this topic. Ryan Meyer from County Attorney's Office, Ramsey Balkly, PZB Director. So looking forward to getting this done. It is on a superfast track. I think Doug explained that the state has, we're on a short clock. So we will be moving very expeditiously on this.
Welcome back, Ken.
I don't see any further discussion. I thank you for the brief discussion and answer to the Vice Mayor. I have a motion and a second for 5C1A and B. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, unanimously approved, six to zero. You did a good job, Ramsey. Okay, we're gonna move on now to 5...
D1.
This is the add-on? No. We're doing the add-on, okay. So we're gonna do 5D1. And we do have several cards. So we'll have a brief presentation on this, and then we will move on to our speakers. Chief Durin, how are you today? And for the record, please identify everybody who has joined you today.
Mayor, Board, I am joined by James Green, Director of Community Services, Taruna Mahor, Assistant Director, John Hewlic. I'm also joined by Helene Hesvidt. We're here today to present to you a resolution. If you remember going back, I think it was October 4th, the Board directed us to bring forth a resolution designating the Palm Beach County Advisory Committee on Behavioral Health and Substance Use and Co-Occurring Disorders. We have a presentation available if you'd like to discuss further.
I'm looking to my colleagues. You wanna have a brief? I think everybody's good. All right. So I'm gonna put a hold on it until we have our speakers, and then we'll see if there's any further discussion. Commissioner Bernard, would you please introduce our speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have two non-speaking cards that we'll receive and file without objection. The first public speaking person will be Stacy Katz, followed by John Macris.
And we'll ask you to take opposite sides of the rostrums here. Please identify yourself for the record. You have three minutes to address us.
Should I go first?
You can go first.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me be able to give public comment. In September, when I appeared...
I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt you. Just your name.
Sorry, Stacy Katz.
Very good. Thank you.
In September, when I appeared before all of you, I said that I would be back, and here I am. We still have a lot of work to do. We are here to ensure and encourage that the Board of County Commissioners consider an ordinance to establish an advisory committee on behavioral health, substance use, and co-occurring disorders. What is before you today is just as critical as the Narcan issue. The current steering committee has been working very hard to date, including submitting a prepared plan that was reviewed in September. The question that I have for the Board today is, why isn't the plan approved yet? As we all know, the wheels of justice and politics spin very slowly. We cannot continue to take our time with this very serious epidemic. Where is this sense of urgency? As an advocate and a mom who has been battling this disease with my own son for way too many years, I implore us all to move much more swiftly. Since 2017, when you approved the first opioid response plan, overdose deaths continue to rise and have nearly doubled. Lives are being lost every day. Families are being destroyed. The new plan you reviewed may not solve all of the problems, but it will go a long way to alleviate the incredible suffering that individuals and families dealing with mental illness and substance use disorder experience day in and day out here in Palm Beach County. We must act now. We must do better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. We appreciate your remarks.
We have John Macris, followed by Reverend Ray Whitley.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is John Macris. I am a, I'm sorry, I am a newly elected member of the Behavioral Health and Substance Use and Co-Occurring Disorders. You could've picked a name that was, lend itself to acronyms, but... I lost my son two and a half years ago to a fentanyl overdose. And since that time, I have been working tirelessly on this issue in many respects. I'm here today to support this ordinance. I think it's, this resolution, I think it's an important resolution as far as meeting the state requirements for a task force and for a plan. There are a couple of things in the resolution that I didn't quite understand. One is that it is required to be self-sufficient. And if somebody can explain to me what that means, that would be great. I'm not gonna prolong my comments, though. You have a lot of people coming up. I would just say this. As I said, it's been two and a half years since my son died. It was March of 2022, six months ago, that the master plan was approved. If I could, in all humility, encourage a sense of urgency on this issue, in Palm Beach County, we lose over one person per day to this tragic epidemic we have. And I think that the master plan goes a long way to helping this problem. We don't have a fix-all, of course, but the plan does provide elements that will help what I consider a tragically, systemically flawed system of care for people that are suffering from substance use disorder. And I would go as far as saying that this systemic system contributes greatly to deaths in this county. And I would urge you to have a sense of urgency and willing to work with you anytime, any day to help move forward on this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Macris. We appreciate your comments.
Before Reverend Ray Whitley, we're gonna have Marie Killian.
Good morning, Maureen Killian. I'm the leader of Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates, whose mission is and vision is to assemble a forum through which education, prevention, treatment, and recovery advocacy groups align, working towards common objectives surrounding all aspects of recovery from substance use and related disorders. We are pleased to be here today and support the statutorily required development, assignment, and authority of an advisory committee on behavioral health, substance use, and co-occurring disorders. It will memorialize the current steering committee's role in county governance and require an annual plan to be submitted to the Commissioners. This resolution meets Florida's opioid settlement fund requirements for a task force and opioid response abatement plan. We can no longer authorize, assign, allocate, or authenticate any of the new funds towards systems, places, people, entities, missions, facilities, foundations, organizations that are not working, have not worked, and will not work to mitigate this public health crisis we have been in for far too many years. This is a once-in-a-lifetime event, at least in my lifetime, receiving the opioid abatement dollars that we've worked really hard to get, dollars that come from lives lost and families destroyed. We have to do this right. We, your community, know how the abatement dollars need to be spent, and we know that for success to be realized, multiple silos must be dismantled, standing evergreen contracts must be ended or reversed. What we have been doing for years isn't working, and by proof of this resolution today, we believe the Board of County Commissioners sees and believes that, too. We must not fall into funding outdated, old-school dogma and failed public funding with new money. We must end that insanity and break out with evidence-based solutions that reflect science, real outcomes, and harm reduction, which includes justice reform, not further criminalization of those suffering from addiction. We keep hearing law enforcement say, we can't arrest our way out of this. Yet we've continued to do that, as well as increase the punishments for those suffering from addiction. Current steering committee unanimously approved the Substance and Mental Disorders Plan update in March. The plan's key recommendations include that the Commissioners enact a resolution, as we're doing today, designating a lead entity with leadership budget, planning, and monitoring authority. We're here to support that. We're here to support the updated opioid abatement plan. We're here to support the soon-to-be-approved annual requirements, the roles and responsibilities that still have the following roles: Submit to the BCC by October 1st of each year. An annual report or response plan update, which shall evaluate mechanisms for Behavioral Health and Substance Use Disorder Services, and recommend any changes that may improve quality, long-term recovery outcomes, and coordination of these services. In pursuant to Section 4A, make policy opioid settlement and other funding recommendations found to be responsive to the opioid epidemic.
I'm gonna ask you to conclude your remarks.
In summary, we support the establishment of the advisory committee, support updated opioid abatement plan, support the outlined annual plan requirements, support self-sufficient language revision, support review of the sunset provision, and support adding SEFRA Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates as an ex officio member list. There are not enough words to express our gratitude to the Palm Beach County Commission for not only listening to the people, but acting for the people of Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Ms. Killian. We appreciate your remarks.
Good morning. My name is Pastor Ray Whitley, and I stand before you as a representative of not only eight black children I have, but my 14 black grandchildren, and my wife is with me today. So, of course, I support this plan, but I have to tell you why. I grew up in West Palm Beach, 38th Street, and we moved to Boynton Beach in the early 80s. And if you know what the early 80s was, it was the height of the crack epidemic. And with the crack epidemic, we saw people with disease and addiction tossed in jail. And the response that was needed at that time wasn't there. We made people who were addicted to drugs and had mental health issues, we locked them up. And their families were in a space where they didn't have the support because we didn't identify. Or we refused to stand up and just say that we had a problem. Fast forward to what we're experiencing now with the opioid epidemic, the response is different. Working in the black and brown communities, that's always the cry. And when you have meetings, you are connected to people's pain. And when you hear them, it's like, why didn't respond like this when black folks were dying from crack overdose? So complain, complain, complain. And I shared those concerns in every space that I went into. They are representatives from other communities, and there needed to be a representative from the black community that's not afraid to speak truth to power. In my sharing, I ended up on a call. Fast forward, I'm the co-chair of the steering committee. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Because every opportunity I get, I'ma speak truth to power. I'ma remind us of how we handled the crack epidemic and encourage us to do something different. I don't know what my role will be on this committee, but I could guarantee you that it's not gonna be the same. So please support it. And if on it, stuff ain't right, I'ma come back and tell you that stuff's not right.
Thank you, Pastor. I have, I assume you'll...
I got 16 more seconds.
You can have every one of them.
So on behalf of the community that I represent, and my children, and my grandchildren, and my amazing wife, support this, please. We need to do something just a little bit different. Commissioner Woodrow Hay was the first person that I heard say this. If you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So I'm sitting at the table, and I'ma demand some jerk chicken and rice and peas.
And I'm sure you will not be a wallflower.
Love your shoes. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, for listening.
There you go. Any more cards?
Yes, we do. We have Lisa Franklin, followed by Micah Robbins.
Ms. Franklin, you have three minutes.
My name is Alyssa Franklin. I am a resident of Delray Beach. I just, I'm also a person in long-term recovery since February 1st, 2012. I just wanna commend, thank you, the Commission for understanding, valuing, and validating the importance of this steering committee's role to date. In summary, we ask that you continue to consider supporting the establishment of the advisory committee, support updated opioid abatement plan that will now be an instrument for this advisory committee, support the outlined plan requirements, support self-sufficient language revision, support review of the sunset provision, support adding SEFRA Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates as an ex officio member list. There really aren't enough words of gratitude to give the Commission because of all, of all the places I've had to go around and do this, whether it's city, whether it's county, whether it's at state levels, whether it's at federal, even across the entire country. Palm Beach County, it is such a joy and a privilege and a blessing to not only live here, but work here, and to have found recovery here. As soon as I made recovery my life is really when I began to live. I graduated U M because of the recovery I found in Palm Beach County. I'm a productive member of society because of the recovery I found in Palm Beach County. I am a productive citizen. Pay my taxes. I push my shopping cart back at Publix. Use that really cool thing on my car that signals a turn. But I value myself. I value my community so much. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be able to give back. Melissa, it is going to be so hard. I thought, when I was driving up here, that this was going to be your last meeting, so I started crying. But you still have the 22nd. So at least one more. But all of you, it's been, it's been so wonderful. And thank you so much for treating us like people and not problems.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Thank you for everything you've done with your recovery.
Before Micah Robbins speaks, we're gonna have Marsha Martino, which will be the last card.
Go ahead, Mr. ... Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weiss. It is a pleasure to be up in front of you again. Much has changed and much has developed since we started this work back in 2017. My wife and I have welcomed two beautiful children. This purple shirt was a lot less athletic fit. And 2 minutes and 40 seconds is the sum total of the amount of sleep I've had in the last three weeks. That being said, the work that has occurred, the challenges that have been faced, and the leadership that has been shown by our Commissioners, and certainly by our friend Commissioner McKinley, has been nothing short of tremendous. We've done a lot. This resolution today is one key piece. And I'd love to say, I have to read it, because Palm Beach County Advisory Committee on Behavioral Health, Substance Use, and Co-Occurring Disorders is a lot to say. Perhaps we could just refer to it as Steve. But this is very critical, but it's just the first step. We are so very close to completing this picture. The work that you have done is so close to completing this picture. The work that you see, the people that are sitting here wearing purple today, is so close to completing the picture. Not only is this resolution critical because it establishes that advisory board, that advisory board has been working tirelessly since 2019 to create a master plan and to create an environment that is safe for all in recovery. However, with the advent of the opioid response settlement, which is groundbreaking, and the way that this county has approached it has been groundbreaking and is leading the way for the rest of the country. Let's finish this. So I encourage our Commissioners, I encourage this community to not only adopt this resolution, establishing this advisory committee, but let's adopt this plan, which has been approved by that committee back in, you know, March, my goodness. March 2022, this was unanimously approved. Secondarily, making sure we do have that lead entity that can make these decisions with our county, our county Commissioners and the constituency that has supported all of this work. This is not just the work of a handful of people. This is an entire community. All of this together can help so many. My children are here. Many are not. This will protect them. And those others will not have died in vain. Let's do this work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your remarks.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us come forward and speak. My name is Marsha Martino. I live in Lake Worth Beach. And I am the Executive Director at NAMI, National Alliance on Mental Illness for Palm Beach County. I've been a member of the advisory committee and part of the construction, involved in the construction of the plan. I'm definitely, we're very much in support of the establishment of the advisory committee and the annual plan. The co-occurrence, I think we all know the co-occurrence of mental health issues and substance use is very high. In fact, we know that it is the expectation, not the exception. Unfortunately, in our society, the stigma is very high with mental illness. And for many people, it is much more socially acceptable to turn to community access drugs and alcohol than it is to access psychiatric treatment. And that is rather unfortunate. And so many people with mental health issues ultimately end up with substance use issues. I know I kind of jokingly say, but seriously, we don't have a system in this county. If you've ever lived anywhere that actually had a system, you would realize that. A system moves someone from one situation to another in their time of need. We get calls at NAMI very regularly, daily, I would say, from family members. Most of our calls for help are from family members who have a loved one in crisis, and many times there is substance use involved. It is extremely difficult to... It is extremely difficult to get help for mental health, especially for someone who doesn't have insurance. And if someone has a co-occurring substance use, it is nearly impossible to get adequate treatment. So we've been very pleased to be part of the building of this plan. I really see it as something that is the beginning of putting together a system for this county, and so that people can get the help that they need and lead productive lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that it, Commissioner Bernard?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sorry I'm talking so much today.
We're gonna miss you.
Some days. First, let me address the pastor's comments. I've heard that many times over the course of working on this issue. And all I can tell you is, when that crisis started in 1980 and forward, I was only in elementary school, and I think Commissioner Bernard was probably still in diapers. You know, and so we can't change the past. All we can do is change how we respond to it moving forward. And Ms. Baker was adamant that we include language addressing the crack cocaine epidemic. And I was adamant about making sure we also included crystal meth, which is ravaging our rural communities as well. And so the purpose of this is while these proceeds are coming from the opioid settlement and are supposed to be used, they're supposed to be used to abate substance use disorders. They weren't specific in what the substance was. And so I want to make sure that your voice is heard and that you continue to carry that message. So thank you so much for being here today. You have been heard. And I wanted to make sure that we got, that we ratified and put into place officially this advisory board, and so I'm happy that we're doing that today. I don't see the harm. We've got nine standing voting members, three ex officios. I don't see the harm in adding one extra ex officio. That would give you thirteen, having a conversation, and nine who can vote. And so I would ask that we amend to include the representative from SEFRA. The good thing about SEFRA is they, they kind of push and pull with the Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network. And so I think that's a healthy conversation to engage in. And then what I'd also like to ask, the March 2022 update to the 2017 opioid response plan was presented to us in a workshop a few weeks back. We never ratified that plan. So we can do one of two things today. I can amend the language here that we're approving so that it reads, under our summary here, "The opioid response plan on April 4th, 2017, as amended on March of 2022." We can do that today, or we can pass this, and I would ask that in two weeks, on the 15th, you simply bring back that language as amended March 2022 to give the board a chance to once again review that, advertise it, and all we would have to do is ratify it. Ms. Baker-
I would prefer the second, if that is okay with the county administrator. We bring it back.
I would prefer the second as well.
Okay.
There was a sticking point in there, and so we want to be able to work through that before, if possible, before we bring it to the board.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the way that staff will pursue that.
Okay, so just understand that that direction has been given to staff, and that we can hopefully bring that back, just to ratify the plan, and have that conversation and advertise it, and be fully transparent about that approval. Okay, wonderful. And so I think with that, then I'd like to, with that one addition to the SEFRA member being an ex officio, I'd like to move approval of this item.
I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley amending the matter before us to have the ex officio member on there. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. Okay, let's continue. Commissioner Sacks, she would like to be recognized.
I want to commend Commissioner McKinley for her leadership in this. You know, it's interesting, when you get into government service, some of the little pebbles that you throw in the lake become bigger and bigger and envelop more people. This has been a tragedy that has claimed so many innocent lives. And hopefully, under your leadership, Commissioner McKinley, this, we will get a handle on this and just make sure that this county is one of the best in terms of recognizing it, identifying it, and healing ourselves and our families. Thank you so much, my colleague, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, because I'm looking at this. There are nine at-large members and eight ex officio members. And we're adding a, or so we're adding a ninth ex officio member, is that-
The existing board had nine and three. We recommend adding the additional ex officio members to make it eight.
Right, so Commissioner McKinley made on her motion, I want to just clarify if that's-
Yeah, my bad. I was reading under the inaugural membership, but yes. You are correct, Commissioner Weiss. So I am adding that SEFRA position. That's all we're doing.
So we're adding, so it'll be nine ex officio members? Because I think the motion was for three or four, so I don't know if we need to correct that or not.
No, I don't think we need to correct it, just-
All right. All right. Thank you.
Everybody clear on what we have in front of us? Nine of ex officio members now. All right, we have a motion in front of us from Commissioner McKinley. We have a second by Commissioner Sacks. See no further discussion. All in favor, all opposed? Show that unanimously approved. Six to zero. Thank you very much, everybody, for your comments. Okay, we're going to move on now to administration, well, wait a minute. Let's do Commission to Risk District Appointments. We'll do District One first.
Not at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, District Two.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to appoint Mr. Jay Nisberg to the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Marino. All favor, all opposed? Show that is approved. Six to zero.
Thank you.
Commissioner Three is not here. Does anybody get anything from him? No, we'll move on to District Five. None at this time. District Six.
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Susan Guinan to the Palm Beach County Sports Commission.
I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All favor, all opposed? Show that is approved. Six to zero. Any others? Okay, Commissioner Bernard?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and the Chair has none. All right, we're gonna move on now to the Administrator's comments. Madam Administrator?
Mayor, the first is our updated Board directives, if you-
Well, just receive and file. You had another announcement you wanted to make?
And the other announcement, and I'm glad he's still here, but we have outstanding employees that work for us. And I think they're all outstanding, so I would give them all awards. But others outside of the county also recognizes their value. And so I'd like for Houston Tate to come up to the podium there. Mr. Tate received during a private awards luncheon and ceremony aboard the Margaritaville at sea on October 15th. He received the honor of a Joe Biden's Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award, which is the highest civil volunteerism award presented by the President of the United States. As a result of Mr. Houston's name being entered into, he will, his name will also be entered into the United States Library of Congress in Washington, DC. He also received a special recognition and honorary doctorate in humanitarianism, an award offered to those who have made countless contributions to their society by way of community services, service, advocacy, and philanthropic work. Mr. Houston was among 23 other honorees throughout the country for this award. He, this award was created in 2003 by the executive order of then-President George W. Bush for individuals who had completed more than 4,000 hours of unpaid voluntary service in communities across the country. It was established after 9/11 to recognize the service and civic contributions of Americans to their local communities. Houston, we are very, very proud of you. We're glad you're a part of Team PBC. And I'm especially happy because I saw the talent and hired you. So I'm gonna take part credit for that. And to thank your wife for all the support that she gives you, which allows you to do what you do for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We left you, we left you speechless?
Directions here. First of all, this is absolutely an amazing achievement. And you can't get something like this without being in an amazing organization. I first want to start with, at that time, she was deputy county administrator, and she molded me in a way that I got what she wanted done. I was very happy that I understood her directions. And so that carryover made it easy for me to be a sprinter. Not a walker, but a sprinter. And she demands that from each and every one of us. So when you look at the county, and you look at our services, our programs that we have, one of the things I think that came from this award was that we've been able to take your cross-departmental efforts, so county departments working with each other, connecting with each other. And I mean, it's easy to be successful in this environment. Because when we have a problem now, we present that problem to this, you know, collective body. And there is so much, and I want to thank all of my, all of the county departments that just makes it so easy. They come to my CCRT meetings, they problem solve, they work with me in terms of how we are gonna move forward. But the main thing is, they either find resources, or they're finding resources from their associates to help us. I remember my boss came to me, in this case, it was Patrick Rutter, and he said, Houston, COVID looked like it's gonna be difficult. You're probably gonna have to find out a way to feed folks for about two months. And I said, wow, two months? Feeding people? Well, needless to say, we served during that period, seven days a week, hot meals from restaurants in this amazing county that came to us and said, hey, I'll provide food for you. And so since that March 20th, when my boss told me to prepare to serve food for those two months, we've been serving ever since. And we've been doing it because there's donors throughout this county who have just been coming up to the plate. Commissioners, you have helped in your ways. It's just been amazing how, as a team, we've made this thing work. So I don't accept this award for me. I accept this award for all of you. God bless you.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you so much. All right, the Administrator's comments are finished. We're now gonna move on to our county attorney. Anything to add? No? Okay. Then we'll do our, on Commissioner's comments, and we'll go in reverse order. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request to do an off-site proclamation for Hamburger Haven.
Hamburger Haven.
A business in my district has been in business for over 50 years.
Well, I have a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? That's approved. Six to zero. Let's go have some hamburgers for lunch. Very good. Commissioner McKinley?
I've spoken enough today. Thank you for getting those two items on the agenda today, Ms. Baker. And thank you to the Mayor and to Commissioner Marino for coming out to District Six and enjoying a little bit of the Federation of International Polo and watching Team USA win their opening game on Sunday.
We certainly enjoyed being in District Six. Okay, Commissioner Sacks?
Well, I didn't have any comments, but after listening to everything that went on today, I'm just so proud to be part of Palm Beach County team. And I just want to note again, Commissioner McKinley, you will be so sorely missed. The leadership that you did on the opioid and now fentanyl, and it's just been impressive. And I just hope that we can all rise to those levels. Maybe we can have an honorary seat there. If we have ex officio members of other commissions, why can't we have one here? So I'm not gonna make that motion yet, Mayor, but thank you, Commissioner McKinley. And thank you for all of these presentations today and the wonderful things that goes on here in Palm Beach County. So proud to be part of this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of District Four, I'd like to request a off-site proclamation declaring November 13th, I assume these are off-site, declaring November 13th through 19th, 2022, as Palm Beach County Caregiving Youth Week, and declaring November 26th as Small Business Saturday.
And I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved. Six to zero. Okay, I have no further comments, so we'll move right on to Commissioner, the Vice Mayor. Okay, well, you were doing it on my behalf. Now you could talk on your behalf.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. Unfortunately, I, once again, in this country, we find ourselves with situations that I think I find troubling. Recently, both in Jacksonville and in the city of Weston, we had anti-Semitic themes being promulgated by some folks. We are, I spent over the weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, I was joined on Saturday by Commissioner Bernard. We came together with Muslim community, celebrating, and their contributions and commitment to our community. And the hatred, unfortunately, that at times rises up in this country is obviously troubling, but it's an opportunity as Americans for us to come together, to be the best people that we can be. And I know in Palm Beach County, we are blessed to have a kind and welcoming county. But I think it's important that when we see things that are inappropriate, we can't sit back and not say something about it. And unfortunately, these occurrences or these situations have occurred, and I hope they never occur again, but if they do, I think it's important that we bring them to light and shine a light on it. And I just hope that we can all come together and stop the hatred. We can disagree, we can agree to disagree about policies and issues. But we are all Americans. We all share this community. We all share this country. And I just encourage people to try and get along.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Do you have an off-site proclamation?
And then I'd like to request an off-site proclamation for World AIDS Day.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. All in favor, all opposed? Show that's approved. Six to zero. All right, my final comments, again, along the same lines. Obviously, I was distressed by the same images that were on the TV that we all saw. You know, I was participating in an ADL March Against Hate just a couple of weeks ago. And this is something that we just need to do every day. I mean, hate has no place in this. You can have differences of opinion politically and otherwise, and you shouldn't hate when you have those differences of opinion. So let's love one another and let's stop this silliness. With that being said, we're gonna be back at 2 o'clock.
You still have District One?
Commissioner Marino?
I'm getting dissed today. I don't know. Anyway.
Poor thing.
First, I would like to request an off-site proclamation declaring November 5th, 2022, as Wounded Veterans Relief Fund Day in Palm Beach County.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed? That's six to zero.
Thank you. I'd also like to point out, you know, the county does a lot with partnerships with the nonprofits, and for all of us that-
And for all of us that went to the Hats Off Nonprofits event, to learn that, we used to say there were 6,000 nonprofits. There's now over 7,500 nonprofits in our county. And two that we partner with a lot are Lagerhead Marine Life Center and the, um, A, uh, Arc of the, of Palm Beach County. And both had some wonderful events in the last two weeks that many of us attended. And I just want to say, our, our partnership dollars go a long way to improving our community. And on a final and sad note, um, a previous mayor, the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Don K. Soleski, and you all know his son, Don K., who worked for FPL, passed away last evening, so hold his family in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, on that note, we're going to be in recess until two o'clock, and we'll see you then. Thank you.